Okay, it is six o'clock, a little after. So I'll call the June seventeen, two thousand and fourteen meeting of the Andalusia City Council to order. And I'll ask Councilman Powell to lead us in the prayer and pledge of allegiance.
Join me as we pray. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you that we live in Covington County, in Andalusia, Alabama. We thank you that you have placed the citizens here that are caring. And I pray, Father, that you would give wisdom to those of us who are making decisions about the direction for our city. I pray that you would keep us ever positive in our thoughts, and that we would always be able to consider what is best for the citizens of our town. So, Father, we ask you to guide us as we deliberate here tonight, so that we can make Andalusia and Covington County the best place that it can be for us and for our citizens. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
We do have guests with us tonight, and I'd like to welcome our guests. First item of business is to approve the minutes of our meeting of June the third, so we'll need a motion to do that.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the minutes as is on June the third.
All right, we have a motion to approve the minutes of the June third meeting. Do we have a second?
I second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes, please indicate by raising your right hand. And I thank you for that. No unfinished business. Under new business, I'm gonna take the podium downstairs and present a proclamation here, and then when we finish with that, I'll probably do a photograph, and then we will come back and handle the rest of the business.
Okay.
Mr. Willie Thomas, would you come down and join me? And bring your beautiful wife with you as well.
(laughing).
It's my pleasure tonight to present a proclamation to Mr. Willie Thomas, and I wanna read this and then present it to him, and I'm sure we'll need to get a photograph for the paper. But it reads as follows: Proclamation of Appreciation. Whereas the city of Andalusia wishes to honor Willie Thomas for his faithful service to the citizens of the city of Andalusia and devotion to the form of the young minds of this community, and whereas a native of Columbus, Georgia, Mr. Thomas made Andalusia his home in nineteen sixty-two and began teaching Spanish, social studies, English, government, and economics at Andalusia High School in nineteen seventy-one, and whereas Mr. Thomas retired from teaching at Andalusia High School in nineteen ninety-four and came out of retirement in two thousand and four to become the director of Bright Beginnings Preschool for the next eleven years, and whereas in the performance of his duties, Mr. Thomas has proven to be dedicated, conscientious, courteous, and trustworthy, and has gained the love and admiration of all those with whom he has worked and served, and might I add, has shown the very good judgment of marrying Ms. Thelma Thomas. Now therefore be it resolved by the city of Andalusia that we do hereby express our sincere appreciation to Willie Thomas for his distinguished service to our community, congratulate him on his retirement, and extend to him our best wishes for a happy and successful future. Signed, this day, Earl Johnson. Under new business, we have Jed Blackwell with us this afternoon, co-director of the South Alabama Regional Airport, and he has come to give us a report on the status of the airport and all the good things that are happening at South Alabama Regional Airport. Jed?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Johnson, members of the city council, I wanted to first and foremost thank you for giving me the opportunity and the privilege to come here this evening and discuss with you an update about your airport, because indeed, this is your airport along with the citizens of Andalusia and the citizens in Covington County, and we do our best to try to keep you informed of what we're doing and what we have planned going on in the future. A few things that I'd like to update you on relates to our fuel sales, the operations of the airport, and I'll get into a few other things that we have going on, and something new that maybe we can leave here all feeling good about tonight. First and foremost, our operations at the airport are going very well at this time. We did have some stumbles in the road a few months ago, back in January and February, where we had very bad weather. We had bad weather, airplanes can't fly, so therefore our fuel cells were down. Why is that important? Because the fuel cells along with facility rent for our airport is the lifeblood of what we do. Our airport, right here in Andalusia, in Covington County, believe it or not, a lot of people don't realize this, we service about seventy-five aircraft each and every day at that airport. So at night, when you lay down in your beds, if you hear all these helicopters flying over your house, yes, a lot of people call me and sometimes complain about the helicopters, but those helicopters are coming here and getting fuel right here in Andalusia, and that money is going back into our airport, which allows us to be active, and most importantly allows us to be self-sustaining, which we have been fully since two thousand and seven. And that's something that we're very proud of, and to the best of my knowledge, we are only the only general aviation airport in the state of Alabama who is fully self-sustaining on their operations, and we're very proud of that fact. Our numbers for this year is to date, we have sold three hundred and twenty thousand gallons of fuel to the U.S. military, we've sold one hundred and three thousand gallons of fuel to civilians. That number is very comparative to our two thousand and thirteen numbers. We're down only ten thousand gallons total, and that's including the bad weather that we have. One thing to keep in mind for our fuel sales at our airport is that we make ninety-eight cent over the cost of fuel. So for each gallon of fuel that we sell, that goes into there, is pumped into our airport. Again, that allows us to pay our salaries, be active in grant programs, and keep our airport looking as good as it is today. The second thing I wanted to discuss that's of importance is our grant program at our airport. Our grant program is very vital. Since nineteen eighty-eight, when we had a full-time manager at our airport, we have secured over forty million dollars worth of grants at the South Alabama Regional Airport. That is the largest amount, for I know the state of Alabama and I feel confident for the entire southeast region for general aviation airports. That is very huge, because it's allowed us to make our runway the length that it is today, and has allowed us to be active in pursuing economic development opportunities. For two thousand and fourteen, we planned on doing perimeter fencing surrounding the airport, and we've had something come up there that's changed that. The reason for that was in two thousand and ten, we acquired a hundred and twelve acres off the east end of our runway to do our runway extension. Everything was good with that, the runway extension's fine, however, earlier in two thousand and thirteen, we began having erosion issues with that land, and the perimeter fence that we were wanting to finish and the new gates that we wanted to install at the airport had to be delayed to two thousand and sixteen, because ADM came in and cited us for those erosion issues and threatened to fine us. We did not get fined, but we went to the FAA and asked if we could use our grant funds for two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and fifteen and make these repairs. The total repair cost was five hundred thousand dollars, just over five hundred thousand dollars. We did not have the funds to pay that directly out of pocket, or we obviously would have, so that's why we had to look at using the FAA funds for this. Unfortunately, that pushed back our gate project and our fencing project. We will have that completed in two thousand and sixteen, as long as we don't have any more delays as far as that goes. An unfortunate event that's happened for us over the last few months is that the Alabama Department of Transportation for fiscal year two thousand and fourteen is not matching those FAA grants. Historically, the FAA paid ninety percent of your overall grant project. Ours was just over five hundred thousand total. Historically, FAA paid ninety percent, and ALDOT matched that at five percent. We had to match that at five percent. In two thousand and fourteen, last month, ALDOT came in and said, "We can't do that, that there's just simply not enough tax money there." So we've gotta match that on ten percent. Fortunately, we do have the funds to do that this year. We are concerned about future years, and we are working with Representative Jones about trying to assist in that, and he's been very helpful with that issue. I wanted to make you aware of that, and anybody that may could help with that, we would certainly appreciate that. All airports in the state of Alabama who are certified by the state are eligible to receive AIP funding. That's AIP, Airport Improvement Program, funding. Airports of our size get up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, and we have secured that since nineteen eighty-eight. That's the small amount of what we get. In addition, we've requested the board, and we have been very successful with that again in the past. So we are kinda concerned about the state's matching grants, and we hope that that gets better in the future. One thing that I wanted to hit on tonight that a lot of the citizens in the community are not aware of is that here at Sarah, we do have a twenty-four-seven fire department. Now, why do we need a twenty-four-seven fire department at our local airport? And I think sometimes a lot of people have this misconception, that our airport's just a small country airport, and that's not the case. Our airport is a very large general aviation airport. Again, we have many aircraft flying through there. We have a large company there, Vector Aerospace, and I'll discuss them more in detail in just a few minutes. And then on top of all the flights that we have, our firefighters that we have are what they call our firefighters, that's aircraft rescue firefighters. Since Vector Aerospace has picked up, they're employing so many people, and in the past, they've been refurbishing several helicopters. They fall under DCMA regulations. That stands for Defense Contract Management Agency. With that oversight, they have to have the full-time fire department there. In addition, that helps support us with aircraft. Safety will always be first and foremost for us, and we wanna do everything we can to protect our people flying into and out of our airport here in Andalusia and Covington County. Our private, I get asked often about our private aircraft hangars. Here at Sarah, we have twenty-six private aircraft hangars, and all twenty-six of them are leased by locals here in Covington County. We've always done a very good job of leasing our facilities. Our facilities are really second to none. They're top-notch facilities, and we're very proud of what we have there. The goal there is, is you wanna have people fill these hangars so that they buy fuel from you in the long run, and again, that's one of our ways of generating revenue that people way before me ever came up with that has made our airport a success. Another thing that we offer at Sarah that's very important, that's been beneficial to us through the years, is that we have a one hundred low lead self-service system. As you know, jets take jet fuel. Well, smaller aircraft, piston-engine aircraft take one hundred low lead, which is what they call aviation fuel. We have a machine in our airport that offers this twenty-four-seven at a reduced cost, and we sell right at about four thousand gallons of fuel a month to the public from that machine. Moving on then to Vector Aerospace. Vector Aerospace is one of the larger employers in our community, and certainly the largest employer at the airport right now other than SATEL. And to give you a little bit of history about Vector Aerospace, I began working at the airport in two thousand and one, right after nine eleven, and members of our community, I can remember them flying to Canada and going and just having original discussions with two individuals about this small company called Helapro, and about how they wanted to consider doing work here at our airport. We presented these nice presentations to them, they wound up signing a lease agreement with us to lease a small eight-thousand-foot hangar located next to the terminal. Again, they had two people. Well, eleven years later, that two people that were employed there by Helapro has turned into one hundred and forty people, and that company is profiting, in years past, they have profited over twenty million dollars here at this site in Andalusia, Covington County. And that's something that we're all very proud of. In the aviation industry, as in most industry, you have your ups and downs. There has been years in the past where the economy has just not been very, very good for that kind of industry, so, you know, you always have a little bit of worry there, but this company is one of the companies, I shouldn't say one of the few companies, this company's done everything that they said they would do and more. They came here with a goal, they've met those goals each and every year, and we hope to continue to keep them here for many, many years to come, and for them to continue to be successful here in Covington County and at our airport. Speaking with them today, they've got work lined up all the way through two thousand and fourteen, more work than what they actually probably can do that will carry over into two thousand and fifteen, and with Fort Rucker being forty-five minutes east of us here, they have hopes and anticipating getting, the military is going to what they call a Lakota helicopter rather than the OH-58, so they're anticipating getting some of that work in future years. So what better place for them to be than here at Sarah, at our airport, to be able to work hand-in-hand with Fort Rucker for those aircraft? DRS Technologies is the company that leases the large hangar complex for us. If you may recall, the large hangar complex was built in two thousand and five and two thousand and six for a company called EJM Aerospace. In two thousand and eight, EJM Aerospace filed bankruptcy, and the hangars were vacant for a short period of time, and now DRS is leasing those facilities. And I want the public to make sure you understand this very clearly. We are not losing any money by those facilities each and every month. Yes, the city of Andalusia, the city of Op and Covington County is backing the loan that we have on that facility. However, EJM did, and DRS pays us the monthly debt service plus a little bit more on those facilities. Now, I get asked the question, "Well, why is there not a hundred and fifty people employed over there? Why are they not just, you know, breaking out?" Well, the aviation industry, you have to have the facilities before you actually get the work, and that takes a year or two for you to get in there and to market that facility, get your DCMA certifications in place before you get work. I can't sit here honestly and say that I guarantee you that DRS is gonna thrive, but if we don't try, then we're never gonna get anything in that facility. But DRS has recently agreed to a six-month extension through June of two thousand and fifteen. The original lease was through the calendar year of two thousand and fourteen. I can assure you, they are marketing that facility very well, and I feel confident the long term, whether it be DRS or somebody working with DRS, that they are gonna have work there, and they are gonna employ people, and they are gonna be an asset to the airport and Andalusia and the citizens of Covington County. So I look forward to the day that that happens. Getting back to how the airport operates, our airport again is one of the few self-sustaining airports in the state of Alabama. Our aviation fuel sales and our facility rentals allow us to do this. These funds pay for all our salaries, as I mentioned, and since two thousand and seven, fortunately, I have not had to come to you, Mayor, and you, the council, and say, "We're out of money. We need help." The city is very generous, and we appreciate everything that you do for us. In two thousand and ten, I came to you and I asked for you for your support for an airshow. At that point in time, that was, if you'll remember, that's when Governor Bob Riley had the homecoming, the big homecoming event, and we had the idea to kinda work with an airshow with that and make it go hand-in-hand jointly. That airshow to me was a good success, and that's one of the biggest things that people wanna talk to me today about is, "When are we gonna have another airshow?" That particular airshow, our goal was to break even with that show, and we did lose a little bit of money, but what we lost, in my opinion, was well worth the return that we got from that show. I think people enjoyed it. It gives people the opportunity to come out and see what we really do at our airport, because our airport is a great asset to our community. Often people, oftentimes people ask, "Well, what is the asset?" Well, think about it. Economic development-wise, when people come here, when you, Mayor, when you and the council go, and you're recruiting industry, recruiting industry for Covington County, oftentimes the first thing that they are gonna see is our airport. That's gonna be their first and their last impression. We strive to do you a good job, and we hope that we do you a good job, and we're gonna continue to do the best that we can for future years. Talking about the airshow, again, going off the two thousand and ten airshow and the success that we had there, I'm very proud to stand here and announce today that after our board meeting yesterday with the airport board of directors, they confirmed that we will be having another airshow in two thousand and fifteen. The set date for that, and it is tentative and subject to change, we hope that it doesn't, but we have tentatively set that for Saturday, November the fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen. This show, we hope, will be as big as the two thousand and ten show, if not better. We hope to schedule a few more acts and maybe make it a little bit livelier than what it was in two thousand and ten, and we wanna continue that trend through the years, hopefully. So, Mayor, council, I'm proud to stand here before you tonight and make that announcement to you, and I look forward to hopefully talking to you in the future more in detail about that. But again, I wanna personally thank you for your support, all that you do for the city of Andalusia, and I'm truly proud to do the job that I do, and we hope to put our best foot forward and continue to do the best job that we can for you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Jed. Anybody have any questions for Jed? Thank you. Appreciate you coming.
Yes, sir.
Next on the agenda is Ms. Chrissy Duffy, who is the director, executive director of the Andalusia Chamber of Commerce, and she wants to come and talk to us about a possible Christmas holiday project. Chrissy?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilpeople and everybody for being here. I'm excited to announce a proposal for an event that we could have here in Andalusia, downtown Andalusia, this Christmas and maybe every Christmas if it goes really well. I propose that we have a snow flurry in downtown Andalusia every Friday night and Saturday afternoon in the month of December to possibly attract, you know, people to come and shop and enjoy our town and bring their family and have a good time. And our, you know, first snow flurry would occur at the Christmas parade, and finale would be the domino drop for New Year's. And I've attended an event where they had these snow machines. It's really a lot of fun, and I think that the people would come out and that they would enjoy it. Our theme this year will be Christmas in Candyland, and we'll focus on the Andy in Candyland, and have Christmas cottages downtown that the children can play in, and a snow flurry every Friday and Saturday in December.
Okay. Thank you. We did get this report from Chrissy upstairs, and the city has agreed to participate in this at some level, and we'll be working on this in the future, and you'll be hearing a lot more about this as we get ready for it, but it sounds really exciting, and we thank you for inviting us to participate. Thank you. Chief Paul Hudson has a matter he wants to take up with the council. We're not gonna act on this tonight, but it's a report about where we are with our patrol vehicles and where we need to go.
Thank you, Mayor. As we talked about upstairs, we have six two thousand and five model Ford Crown Victorias and one two thousand model Ford Crown Victoria that we're needing to replace with some new vehicles. We shopped around, looked around, and what we've come up with is the Chevrolet Tahoe, which was bought last year for the police department. It's been a good vehicle, very few problems. That's what we're asking for this time. Try to get back on track with what the original plan was for the take-home car program, with three a year. We're kinda behind on that program, so I'm asking the council to consider purchasing five new Chevrolet Tahos for the police department this year to help us kinda get back on track with it. Give you all a packet that's got some of the options that we're looking at with those vehicles.
Okay. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor.
And we did, we also discussed this item upstairs in a little more detail. We're not gonna take action on this tonight. We're gonna study the financial ramifications related to it and make a decision on it in the near future. Okay, we're also pleased to have with us tonight Tim Ramston from CDG Engineering to talk to us about the status of our South Three Notch Street project.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. As the mayor stated, I am here to talk about South Three Notch. This is a A-trip two-phase project. Now, let me first tell you a little bit about the history of where we are, where we are today and what we're doing, and how we're gonna move forward with the project. At the end, I'll take any kind of questions you would like. The application was submitted in October of two thousand and twelve. It seems like a long time ago. It was awarded for funding in the full application in February. A scoping meeting was held here in town with DOT, and we went through what our plan was for the project. Survey started, and as part of the A-trip program, a comprehensive traffic study has to be performed. Also, with Three Notch being so complex and turning movements, we felt that we needed to spend a little bit more time on that aspect of the plan. And then also, a geotechnical investigation was performed. Geotechnical investigation is something that we perform for subsurface. Andalusia, you know, we have found at times has poor material underground, so we performed that, and what we found right now is that the material underground looks to be relatively good. What does that mean for you? What that means is we can reuse it for roadbed in the future. When we did the original application, we put into contingency of not being able to use that material. We wanted to kinda edge our bets and make sure that we had enough money to fund the project. So right now, we think that we will not need to use all that money, okay? So that's a good thing for going forward. So we started plan assembling. We submitted the plans to DOT in early January of this year. They were ninety percent complete plans. In the end of March, DOT wanted to meet with us here to discuss the project. The mayor was there, Andy Wiggins was involved in that meeting. And they wanted to discuss some issues with design. Traditionally, DOT does not really get involved in the design of a project. Yes, they approve it, but the liability for the project is on the design engineer, me. A-trip has kinda changed a little bit. DOT still does not do that on traditional projects when you have a T-project or a sidewalk project like that, but in A-trip, they are, and the driving factor there is dollars. When the A-trip program was first established, it was to be a nine-hundred-million-dollar program. Right now, the latest numbers are pushing a little over a billion dollars. Now, what is A-trip? To remind you, A-trip is the state of Alabama floating bonds in the anticipation of future federal dollars, okay? Because it is future federal dollars, that means that DOT is also concerned about when they get reviewed of these plans in the future, it has to meet federal guidelines. So they run the risk of not being able to get reimbursed for projects that they've done. So what does that mean? In this project, they wanted to really question items like turn lanes, storm drainage, sidewalks, and the actual general alignment of the project, which is a little unusual. To go back to the traffic study, the reason why we did that was to try and justify our design in the future. So it's been a good tool for a discussion with DOT, but it's taken a little bit of time to actually get them to approve it. So what does that mean? We had a traffic count on Three Notch that actually only warrants a two-lane road. So our design was to go for a two-lane alignment from the railroad to Simmons, and then from Simmons, we transitioned to three-lane, and then when we get to Seagulls, it is a three-lane alignment from there all the way out to the bypass. Why is it three-lane? Well, it's a one lane either way, and then a universal turning lane. At Moore Road and then the two entrances into the hospital, we have dedicated right turn lanes, okay? The turning movements at those three locations justify turn lanes, but the actual straight-line traffic count does not justify more than a two-lane. So DOT has questioned us in regard to that. We feel like we have got past that at this point, and we'll keep those turn lanes. Remember, even though you don't have traffic counts right now that warrant it, you have a four-lane out there, so you have people making those turning movements, and they are protected by having another lane for cars to go by. So we feel it is justified to have a three-lane with a universal turn lane and dedicated turn lanes in those specific locations. So, moving forward, we plan on submitting the next set of plans at the end of July. From that, we will go through several more reviews with DOT. One will be in October, the next one will be in November, and right now, DOT is driving the letting schedule, when the actual project is bid. Right now, the letting schedule is for January of two thousand and fifteen. We would anticipate that the project would go to construction two to three months after that. Now, when I say anticipate, traditionally, it's two months, but I said a little earlier... But I said a little earlier that dollars are driving ATRIP. And it's a little bit of a moving target. What I mean there is, again, DOT has gone a little over budget. So they're looking at where they can cut dollars. But also, there are not enough contractors to build a billion dollars' worth of work in a very short amount of time. So when projects are put out to bid, contractors are obviously trying to get as much work as they can. And they will build in liquidated damages to their projects. So that just drives projects up. So what DOT has started to do is put a provision in all of their plan assemblies that says a contractor has six months to be able to start the project. Will that happen in, in this project? I cannot tell you at this time. I will be able to tell you when we actually get to the letting schedule. But, you know, I would anticipate right now that we'd start construction late spring of next year and be finished early summer, middle summer of '16. It is a 240-day working project. Working days are not calendar days. So working days can, you know, 240 days is usually about a year to a year and two, three months. At this time, I'd take any questions.
Thanks, Tim. Anybody have any questions for Tim? Tim, if you would, just go over one more time for all of our benefit, the difference in this ATRIP grant project and other projects that we, for example, had on River Falls Street and how they're managed and who gets to make the calls when things get done and when they don't get done.
Yeah, and that's an important part of ATRIP, which we all are kind of getting used to. And DOT, again, is something that DOT is trying to get used to as well. Traditionally, when you have a project like River Falls Street, you're the sponsor. And you have all the responsibility of letting the project and managing the project.
When you say you, you're talking about the city in this case.
Yeah. And obviously, we manage that for you in construction. How this is different is that ATRIP is actually a DOT project, and they let it. So you have no control over the letting schedule or how the letting is performed. Okay? So you're really at their mercy of when you can do it. Then when it gets to construction, you would still contract with us to do the, the construction E&amp;I, engineering inspection. But it is DOT running the project. So as far as funding's concerned, traditionally, when you do a River Falls Street project or any of the sidewalk projects, it is 80/20, usually 80/20 split on the, on the funding. You pay it the, the construction estimate every month, and then get reimbursed for it. This is a little bit different in ATRIP. What ATRIP is going to say is when it's let and the, the actual construction cost is, you know, determined, you will actually pay the 20% upfront at that point. Then DOT will distribute the money to the contractor on monthly pay requests. So a little bit different than how they usually are done. And again, DOT, this is new to DOT, so it's a little bit of a moving target as well with DOT.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions?
So Tim, on the, the length of the, of the, of the road, the South Three Notch Street, the original plan was for the three-lane to go from the railroad crossing to the bypass.
That's correct. It does.
But DOT decided we didn't need that much three-lane. So they shortened it to Simmons Street to the bypass.
Well, no, actually, it really does not warrant having a three-lane from the railroad track to Simmons. Plus, you don't have the right-of-way to be able to do it. Okay? The right-of-way changes when it gets to Simmons. It's a lot narrower. So in that area, it's just going to be two-lane. It, it does not warrant it. There's not the turning movements that there are at Moore Road and at the, at the hospital.
Have they approved the construction of sidewalks from?
Not yet. That is still something that we are trying to negotiate with them. We have not received any official comments from DOT since that meeting in March. Everything is verbal. We are about to try and force that issue to get some comments back. But sidewalks right now, I think, would be approved where they are currently in place. But from Simmons out to Moore Road, they, at this point, are not approved. What I do know we can have approved is to construct it where a sidewalk could be built in the future. You know, I think we'd be making a mistake if we weren't allowed to put sidewalks and then made it where the alignment would prohibit you from doing sidewalks in the future where you'd have to buy right-of-way or something like that.
In other words, the plans that y'all submit will not have sidewalks drawn in?
No, they have sidewalks in them. The plans that we've already submitted and the new plans that we are going to submit will have sidewalks in there. We, we want DOT to say no, and this is the reason why. We don't want to give them any reason to think that we don't want sidewalks.
They just haven't been approved yet.
Yeah. They've just not been officially approved. We know that certain things like decorative lights, that those are probably not going to be approved. But we're going to push very hard for sidewalks. It is, you know, ATRIP is somewhat multimodal as well. It, it fits with your comprehensive plan. So we feel like we've, we can justify the sidewalks.
Did, I noticed you said that the DOT would pay the engineering fees and whatever. Does that mean that we're going to get a better deal with DOT than working straight through CDG?
It's the same thing. No. The engineering design is non-reimbursable. The construction E&amp;I, if it was, well, River Falls Street was a little different. But if it was a sidewalk project, for instance, DOT has to approve the agreement that you have with us regardless. They actually, we're under a, a federal audit. So we have an FAR number that we have to provide to DOT every year. And, you know, they audit our books. So when you contract with us, they will actually go through the mandate estimates, and they'll either approve it or not approve it. So it wouldn't change.
Good try.
Yeah. Nice one.
Okay. Anything else? Thanks, Tim. Appreciate that report. Next item of business is Resolution Number 2014-09. It's, this is an abatement resolution, a good, again, weeds and grass abatement. I'll read off their five properties here involved with this. And a lot of these are repeat customers, so to speak. 305 Allen Avenue, 307 Snowden Drive, 204 Chickasaw Street, 321 Pugh Street, and 205 Dahlia Drive. And you have with your packet there picture, photographs of each of those properties. And it's pretty easy to see why we need to take action on each one of those. So I put the resolution to you.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution 2014-09 for the abatement of the public nuisance of weeds on those listed properties.
All right. We have a motion to approve the resolution. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Have a second of, of the motion, motion to approve. Any further discussion before we vote? All right. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 2014-09, please indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? And I think that carries unanimous. Lee? Thank you. No other business act upon. Do have some announcements to talk about real quickly. We have one opening on the Planning Commission. Someone who's interested in serving on that should let us know by giving us a call here at City Hall. We have four openings on the Downtown Redevelopment Authority. I think this is about the second time we've announced this. So we'll be looking to fill those soon. So if you, if you have an interest in serving on the Downtown Redevelopment Authority, and hopefully, we'll have some work to do on that in the near future, please let us know in the same fashion. Give us a call. One report that we have neared completion on the South Side project. This project was started about a year ago or a little over a year ago when we started looking for the grant. And we were successful in receiving the grant. And we went over there, were able to go there and rework a lot of the water lines, the sewer, some of the sewer lines, put in some new fire apparatus, firefighting apparatus in, in that area. And also some stormwater runoff issues that we had that were very bad over there. Were tearing up a lot of the streets and causing a lot of problems with potholes and all of that. Anyway, we have completed practically all of that work. There's just a little bit of cleanup work left. I, I forgot how many streets have been completely resurfaced. But there's seven or eight. It's quite a number. And they, it really looks nice. And the city clerk and I were over there today and stopped and talked to some of the neighbors over in that neighborhood. And they were all, had big smiles on their face with this, this project because it really has improved the area. So we're very proud of, of that project. And again, it's very close to being finished. Also, would like to announce the city. I'll, I'll wait and make this, this announcement at the next meeting since we have no publish on that right now. So is there anything else to come before the council tonight? Hearing none, we will stand adjourned.